Thank you. You want to go ahead and do the prayer, Charlie?
Yeah, go ahead and pray.
Hey, let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we know that you're all good. And Lord, that we ask you that you continue to guide this city through the mayor and the council as we make decisions on what is best for the citizens of Montgomery. And let us remember to keep you always first in our heart. I ask you to be with each person here tonight, Lord, that if they're going through something, I ask that you put their hand on them and comfort them because you are the only one that can fix everything. Lord, we love you and we praise you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please rise to the pledge.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. It took two blood, which was a stand, one nation, unencouraged, invincible, liberty just as strong.
Council, any motion on the October the 5th work session? Give it to me. I got a motion. All in favor, raise your hand.
Eight with Counselor Lyons abstention.
Yeah, okay. Who?
Counselor Lyons abstention.
Okay, okay.
Well, that's gonna be seven.
Well, Mr. Calhoun's not in the room.
Yeah, that's right, Mr. C., he's not here. So it'll be seven with one abstention.
Okay. All right, I need a regular, I need a motion.
First to adopt.
A motion to adopt, all in favor, raise your hand.
Seven with one abstention.
And one abstention. Okay. All right. Chip's not here. I need Chip right now. And he's not here. And attorney's not here. So I guess we'll just have to skip him. Let me tell you what we're gonna do. We're gonna go ahead and call on the sheriff. I see the sheriff thought I saw him coming. I'll go, where's? Sheriff? There he is. You got a special award to the, tonight. I want us, go ahead and come up and let's get that special award done. Do it in the middle here. It'll work out better and everybody be in the middle. Sheriff, good to have you in the house. We hadn't, we don't get to see you often.
Chief Cooper's gonna handle everything tonight.
Okay, that's, all right, let's talk about who's first. You got it?
Yes, I go first, sir. On behalf of Montgomery Exchange Club, we are excited today to present to Montgomery Fire Rescue Lieutenant Charles E. Fowler, Jr., with an award of outstanding service to the citizens of this community. And we thank you for this time allowing us to make this presentation. A few months ago, he had an idea of supplying AEDs to the ballparks and community centers around the city. Because normally you may have some emergencies, especially with young people, even at ballparks. So he came up with the idea, pitched the idea to the fire chief, and he said, "What does it take to make it happen?" He said, "I just need some time." So we had some AEDs come in and we had some outgoing. So he, with a little help, he refurbished some of the outgoing ones and repurposed them for the ballparks and community centers. And we took the time out to go out and hang them in the cabinets and make sure they were secured. So at this time, we are 100% complete on that project. And with the idea and the vision, we certainly thank you for that. So every year, the Montgomery Exchange Club honors the firefighter who went above and beyond the citizens, their duty to the citizens of this city. And this award celebrates the sacrifice and dedication that Lieutenant Fowler exemplifies over the past year. And with that, we present to Lieutenant Fowler, the National Exchange Club Award for Firefighter of the Year.
All right, are you ready for the picture? We're ready. Congratulations. Thanks for the job.
Congratulations, sir.
There you go. Yeah, that's great.
Okay, everybody. One, two, three.
All right. Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Good seat. Good seat, Jim. Thank you. Yeah, you have to get me up there. Jim Martin, how are you doing?
Hi, how are you?
Good to see you. Yeah.
All right, Missy, all right, there we are now. Okay, Chip, do you have anything to say from the mayor's standpoint? Mayor, you wanna tell us where the mayor's at?
Mayor's in Washington, and he's doing some exciting things up there for us, checking on, we have opportunity for some federal dollars.
Okay.
And he is making sure that we're in the proper place.
It's a good time to be there because we got a lot of, we got a lot of need and maybe we should find a spot to bring back some things.
And he's with the, our federal lobbying team, and he is also meeting with a couple of members of the administration and some transportation issues that could play a key role in some big economic development news that we may have very soon.
Sounds good, okay? Thank you. We'll move on from there. I guess we're in a situation where let's see what I got on. Oh, you got one. I think everybody's signed up for a particular issue here, and so we'll go, when these things come about, we'll call on your name.
Hello, Mr. President. Chip. Chip.
Yes, ma'am.
I had someone at my quarterly meeting on the 7th ask about our new department, crime prevention.
Yes, ma'am.
I had no information to give them. Can I get some information? I kind of asked Jamila, but I think it's kind of gotten away. I know there's so much on a plate sometimes, so if you could just get me some information that I could share with the community, they just wanted to know more about it.
If you'll give me the 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, I'll get it to you.
Sound good.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, item number one.
Mr. President, item one, 90-day review of Aqua Ultra Lounge at 6804 Atlanta Highway.
Mr. Brown, come forward, please. You don't need a sympathy, I don't think, but we'll sympathize. Your name for the record.
Eduardo Brown.
Eduardo, we called you back because we've had problem in that district for quite a bit.
Right.
And we called, we called the police report on you. You had one call during the time you've had it the last few months. That's all you had. And we're pleased with that. So we'll probably be looking at you another three months to see, we'll call you, talk to if we've got a problem.
Yes, sir.
But at this point, looks like you're doing a good job. I don't know how much you open. Are you open a good bit?
We open two to three days a week, some weeks one day a week. Two to three days a week, primarily.
Friday, Saturday?
We may run one day during the week, and then we'll run weekends, yes.
Okay. Well, so far, we have not had any complaints?
Yes, sir.
And we look forward to not having any complaints anymore?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Well, just keep that up and we'll be happy. And you'll be happy, too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a good one, thank you.
Take care of that foot.
So you want me to schedule this for a three-month review?
Yeah, I'll, about three months. Let's go, let's go till.
January.
January, let's look, let's look at the first of February, okay?
Review, first meeting in February?
Yeah. We'll catch you then, okay?
Okay.
I'll get you through the tough times.
Item two, 30-day review of resolution revoking the business license of Narrow Lane Case Car at 2000 East.
Representative? Hello?
Yes, sir.
Your name for the record, sir?
Neilam Patel.
Neilam Patel. Okay, this was brought to our attention, let's see. Mr. Calhoun, is this your deal?
This is Mr. Mitchell. We're working it together.
Mr. Mitchell, y'all working it together? Okay. Y'all want to talk to Mr. Patel?
So I know we brought you up here probably a month ago. So tell me some of the things that you have been doing. I think we had an issue with maybe trash and, you know, people hanging around. What you, what have you put in place since then?
You can pull your, you can pull your mask down. We can hear you better without your mask.
Hi, my name is Angela Extron with South Johnson. If it's okay that, because we met and we discussed this together, is it okay if I speak, Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, Angela, it'd be fine. You, you're more.
We met, we met, we had two in-person meetings, we had phone calls and data communication. We, he decided to, we decided together, and he come up with a plan to have two trash pickup times from eight in the mornings, from eight to 10, and in the evenings from four to six, he have trash pickups. And during the daytime, as needed, he does go through and pick up trash. If you've noticed, if you drove by there, it's much cleaner now. My members also go through and we look, and I also drive by and I look, too, as well throughout the day. It's much cleaner on the premises now. And him and I do have communication, we do call and talk to each other. So those are the new trash pickup times throughout the day. So there's a two-hour window. So if it don't start exactly at eight, it's in between 10, eight and 10, and four and six, and as needed throughout the day. Because, you know, patriots do come in and throw trash throughout the day. That's, that's the scheduled time for the trash pickup. As far as, he did have some questions about security, too, as well. His security provider is Global Security Company. His store hours are from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight on Sunday through Thursday, and on Friday through Saturdays, it's 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Security is there from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight on Sunday through Thursdays, and on Fridays from 7:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. And what security has been working on is clearing out the crowds up front, in the front of the gas station and also at the gas pump. The neighbors of the association, as long, as well as myself, we've been making rounds and looking at the gas station and seeing if there's crowds up there, and that has really cleared out. I don't know if you've had a chance to ride by and look at that location. It has really, really changed over the last 30 days. I'm up there on the weekend, in the middle of the week, I work remotely, so I'm out riding and looking. I also talk with Mr. Patel, too, as well. We also have our South Alliance president as well that's been involved with us, Mr. Michael Jackson, he also rides and look at the location as well, too. So that's what we've been doing in reference to that. Security also talk with the patriots and ask them to move out if they start gathering or if they're there too long, too, as well. I know that you've also been there, too, on site, too. They've also had a call, we've also looked at the fact of whether or not MTD would need to be off duty officer, which I talked to Mr. Patel, too, about that in our meetings, whether or not they need to be on site, especially on Fridays and Saturday nights, to add an additional support system there between 10 and 1:00 a.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. But I'm up there and I'm looking, because I get up, I'm, you know, I don't go to bed early, so I do ride out. I haven't seen any issues, I haven't been made aware of any issues at the gas station. Mr. Patel and I, we do talk. I don't know if you're aware of any issues in the last past 30 days, but they, they called, they haven't got a response back. So him and I, when we had our meeting on Saturdays, what we said, "Well, we'll, we'll see how things go, we'll continue to communicate." He's gonna be coming to our meeting on Thursday to the association so that all of the members can meet him. So he's also loved our vision. Our vision is taking our community back, being a part of the community, being a part of the solution, not a part of the problem. So he loves our vision, so he's a part of our association as well now. So we're working together to take our community back. So that's where we are at this point right now.
Very good.
Thank you. Good work. Good work.
All right, next item. Do you all need, you got any more questions?
No, we're good. I'm satisfied.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Item three, ordinance consenting, consenting to disposal of certain real property by Waterworks and Sanitary Sewer located on Washington Road and Farnham Parkway to Wesco MGM LLC.
Any motion to suspend rules?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Any questions on this? Any motion to adopt?
Mr. President, move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Item four, ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement in settled real estate located at 1508 South Hope Street to Jamie Falls.
Any motion to suspend rules?
Suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Any questions on this item?
Sell it.
Any motion to suspend rules? Any motion to adopt? All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Item eight, ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement in settled real estate located at 1558 South Hope Street.
Any motion to, motion to suspend rules?
Move to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Item six, ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement in settled real estate located at 822 Rosa Parks Avenue to Marvin Belzer.
Any motion to suspend rules?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Move to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Item seven, ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement in settled real estate located at 706 Underwood Street to Marvin Belzer.
Any motion to suspend rules?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted. Item eight, resolution adopting the 2022-2025 Montgomery Fire Rescue Strategic Plan and acknowledging the 2021 Montgomery Fire Rescue Community Risk Management Assessment and Standards of Cover.
This will be carried over to the first meeting in November.
Okay. Item nine, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Speedway at 5559 Troy Highway.
Representative for Speedway on Troy Highway? Troy Highway Speedway. Your name for the record, sir?
Good evening, my name is Brad Braun.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, it's a public hearing, it's been held, it's brought forward to the council, any motion to suspend rules?
Motion to suspend rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Item 10, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Twain Curve at 441 Twain Curve.
Representative Twain Curve, here, please. Representative Twain Curve. Item number 10. I got nobody signed up for it, okay?
Representative?
We have a public hearing. Is anyone, it's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, it's a public hearing, it's been held, brought forward to the council, we'll carry it over because he's not here.
Item one.
Number 11?
Application for retail beer and retail table wine owned or off premises, doing business at Chantilly 13 at 10477 Chantilly Parkway.
Is your representative at Chantilly 13 here? Yes, sir, come forward. Your name for the record, sir?
Kevin Bressel.
Okay, Kevin. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, it's a public hearing, it's been held, it's brought forward to the council, any motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck. Welcome back to town.
Thank you for your time.
Nice. Very good.
Item 12, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lights.
Okay, we have somebody who wanted to speak on item 12, will you? Yeah, Josh Walters? Josh Walters? I don't, is Josh Walters here?
Mr. President, I met with Mr. Walters in the lobby prior to the meeting, and we agreed to meet and discuss.
You're good, okay. All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Same, true, but, um.
Okay. I see, we're meeting, okay. I'll check out, very good. Any more suspended rules on 12?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Move to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Okay. All right. You have, uh.
Yes, sir, I have an additional that the city attorney gave me, it's a, did you pass out copies?
Yeah, the resolution for the.
No, this is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute documents for the purchase of property owned by the family trust of John S. Bowman.
Okay. I got a quick read on this now. You get two of them? There's two of them? All right, you gotta tell us what's going on here. Tell us what we're doing.
So several months ago, Betty Beville was going through some contracts, some leases, that kind of thing. She found this lease agreement where we've been, we have, we own most of Monroe Street parking deck. There is a very small piece of property that parking deck six on, that we don't own. There's a lease agreement that you will see there. We've been leasing that small portion since 1986. The lease amount initially was $1,500. The way it's worded, it's scheduled, they can increase it annually. We're now paying about $3,400 a month to lease this small portion. So Betty asked that we reach out and see if they'd be willing to sell it. We did reach out to them. We went through, our, our real estate attorney, we used to negotiate a lot of our property deals, but he negotiated it, and they offered to sell it to us for 1.5 billion. And we're asking the council to consider letting us purchase that small piece. There's no way to, to basically renegotiate it. This was something that was put into effect years and years ago.
It's 3,500 a month?
3,500 a month, and it's scheduled to be.
So you.
It's a basis based on the Consumer Price Index, okay? And we're running into a problem next year. I think this is a hundred-year lease that was done in 86. Yes. And we found out that come next year in the June timeframe, based on what we read, and Stacy read it as well, is that the lease, lease or would be entitled to 30% of the revenue we collect in that parking deck, plus 60 parking spaces.
Wow.
So we're not only buying the, or a spot of land, we need, we're buying the lease agreement as well.
There was, are you dealing with John Bowman, Junior? Who are we dealing with?
We're going through our real estate lawyer.
His son, but you're dealing with his son? John Junior's in, is in, in charge of trust. Right. Is he still getting 50 parking places in there out of this deal?
No. It'll be over and done.
So it'll be done?
Yes. Because it's only gonna get worse over time.
Miss.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Beville, now you say we have 60 parking spaces on, on site?
No, I'm saying that they would be entitled to 60 parking spaces that they could use as they choose. Plus, they would get 30% of the revenue that we collect from the remaining spaces.
That's with the, with the old agreement?
The original agreement, not with this. This is why I had recommended that we just go on and buy it and be done with it.
How many parking spaces in there, Ms. Beville?
It was about 60 per floor, I believe, and there's four floors. It's 200 some spots, I can't remember exactly.
And then what, what's the fee on them? Is there a fee?
Oh, yes. We have monthly rooms as well as daily rooms out there. And I don't have a fee schedule. Tom Pierce is the one that manages that.
It's around $50 a month.
Around $50 a month?
Per spot, on average.
Hey, Betty, would they, would they not negotiate a new lease, or they're just gonna play hardball, we thought?
Oh, no, there was no new lease.
No, no, I know, I get it, I get it. Okay. Anybody got any questions, Ms. Beville? Sounds like a good deal.
I got one question. On the purchase, is this gonna be a general fund item, or where are we getting the money to purchase it?
The money?
Yes.
No, it's not general fund.
Okay.
We have some other revenues.
Project.
We can pay, yes, on a project.
Okay.
That will allow us to purchase that.
Okay. That's a good deal. We don't have a choice, I don't think. We gotta get that done, because 100 years? That's not very good. Okay. I don't want to be here to see it, but I, I don't want anybody else to be here.
I will, Charlie.
You'll be here?
I'll be around.
150 years. All right. Sounds like we don't have a choice. I don't have a choice. Any motion to suspend rules?
Motion to suspend rules?
All in favor, raise your hand. We're expanding rules on this thing, okay?
Need to see hands counting.
If you got, all right.
Unanimous.
Okay. Now, any questions before we vote this? Okay, I need a motion to approve, adopt.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
That solves the problem.
Thank you, appreciate it.
100-year problem.
Thank you.
CC, you ain't gotta hang around with that now.
Counsel, we have put before you a resolution authorizing the payment of mayor and council.
Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. All right, now, Ms. Brenda?
You have before you a resolution authorizing the payment of mayor and council expense allowance pursuant to the 2022 budget.
Okay, any motion to suspend rules?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
Move to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right.
And I have some contingency funds.
Do you?
Yes, sir, these have not been approved by the mayor, but they are all vendors. For District 9, $1,000 to MPS for Mark Crossing School Baseball. For District 4, $1,000 to Jamarri Correll Williams Foundation. $75 to Danley Pines. $75 to English Village Neighborhood Association. 100 to Greater Washington Park Association. These are all neighborhood associations. Homeview, $75. Hunter Station, $75. Mobile Heights, $75. South Lawn Community Organization, $75. Western Hills, $75. West Gate, $75. Westview Gardens, $75. West Wood Estate, $75. And Woodcrest, $150.
Okay. Anybody else got to do that?
I do, I want to add some for District 4. Let me do 150 to Old Cloverdale. $100 for the breast cancer. Faith House, 250.
You have got a pink tie on tonight, breast cancer.
I got my pink shirt on.
Council's got the pink.
Faith House, 250?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And walk to end Alzheimer's, $100.
I couldn't hear that last one.
Walk to end Alzheimer's, $100.
Ms. Brenda?
Okay, who next?
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to add, uh, $250 for Alzheimer's. Um, $250 for breast cancer. And what was, the, the Hope House?
You forgot.
Faith House.
And $250 for Faith House.
Okay, very good.
Ms. Blaylock, I'll, I'll copy Clay. Just same three as Clay, I'll copy those.
Okay, $250 to Alzheimer's, $250 to breast cancer, and $250 to Faith House.
Yes, ma'am.
Do the same thing for District 9. District 9 do the same thing.
District 6 do the same thing.
Okay. I have to say it so the public can understand what's going on. $250 to Alzheimer's, $250 to breast cancer, $250 to Faith House.
Okay.
Yes, District 5 also, Brenda. Way no District 8.
$250 to Alzheimer's, $250 to breast cancer, $250 to Faith House.
Yeah. Me and you had a mic.
District 3 will be doing the same thing, Brenda.
District 3, $250 to Alzheimer's, $250 to breast cancer, $250 to Faith House.
Okay.
For District 3. Anybody else?
District 2?
Okay, District 2, what's your go?
My list is kind of lengthy here.
Make your tone.
Girls on the Run, 1,000. Eastbrook.
What, what, what?